Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the September CalSTRS Board. Let's start with roll call.
For the Director of Finance, Ms. Pearl.
Here.
Controller Cohen. Mr. Keely.
Here.
Mr. Tang.
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto. Mr. Gunning.
Yeah.
For the State Treasurer, Mr. Raffino.
Present.
For the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Patterson.
Present.
Mr. Juarez.
Here.
Chairperson Bradford, you have a quorum. And I have a short statement on public comment. The CalSTRS Board meetings are live web-streamed, video archived, and available to the public on calstrs.com. Individuals who wish to address the Board should wait for the 10-minute public comment period at the end of the agenda item the speaker wishes to address. For comments not pertaining to a specific agenda item, there will be an opportunity for additional statements at the end of the open session. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to comment. However, if there is not enough time for each speaker to have three minutes, the timing will be at the discretion of the Chair. To protect the privacy of speakers under the age of 18 who wish to address the Board, only their first name and affiliated organization may be provided, but other personal identifying information such as their last name, age, or school may not be shared. Since the May Teachers Retirement Board meeting, CalSTRS has received one email asking the Board to consider the addition of adult children as an option beneficiary, and one letter from a member encouraging CalSTRS to make it easier for members living abroad to contact CalSTRS. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Without objection, we've approved the agenda. Any objections? Okay. Having done that, the Board is going to recess into closed session. We will not be back in open session today. We will reconvene Thursday morning in closed session with open session starting later Thursday morning. Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the CalSTRS Board regular meeting of open session. We actually opened the meeting on Tuesday, when most of you probably were not here and took attendance and did our agenda. I would like to report out from closed session that we took action on CIO and CEO compensation. We're going to start this morning with Jenny reading our public comment.
The CalSTRS Board meetings are live web-streamed, video archived, and available to the public on calstrs.com. Individuals who wish to address the Board should wait for the 10-minute public comment period at the end of the agenda item the speaker wishes to address. For comments not pertaining to a specific agenda item, there will be an opportunity for additional statements at the end of the open session. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to comment. However, if there is not enough time for each speaker to have three minutes, the timing will be at the discretion of the Chair. Please be advised while criticism is protected, abusive language, or other disruptive behavior that goes beyond protected speech and impedes the meeting's progress may result in the termination of further comment and/or removal if the behavior continues. To protect the privacy of speakers under the age of 18 who wish to address the Board, only their first name and affiliated organization may be provided, but other personal identifying information such as their last name, age, or school may not be shared. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Before we get started on item 11, I just want to say a few words. Firstly, I want to echo Chair Keely and thank everyone in attendance today, especially everyone who came here after a three-day weekend. I know that could be travel upon travel. For those who were not in attendance at yesterday's Investment Committee meeting, since the May Board meeting, we have made some changes to the boardroom, mostly technology upgrades. So please give us a little grace up here. We're still navigating. If you would notice, there's now a separate wall clock above the screen behind the dais so that you can track your time during public comments. I hear it even changes colors. I haven't turned around to see it yet. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on our mission and purpose for today and point to the member video we saw yesterday featuring Santa Monica Community College Professor Elaine Roque that aired at the beginning of the Investment Committee yesterday. Like Chair Keely, I am very proud of this series, and I'm personally moved every time we see these stories. I'm also reminded of our mission and duty as Board members to provide a secure retirement for our educators and beneficiaries. What spoke to me really yesterday in the video is when Elaine said that I always tell my students the best part of my day is when I'm with them. As an educator, and I think all the educators on the Board, if you asked us, the part we miss the most about not being in the classroom is the students, for sure. You saw that Elaine noted that early on she had no idea about her pension, and over time, CalSTRS has given her incredible confidence about retirement. I think that can be the case with many educators. They're focused on their students and their job. As we embark on our agenda today, it's incumbent to us as Board members to continue to help Elaine and all of our other educators by focusing on their retirement so they can focus on their students. The mission and purpose underscores the significance of our fiscal year returns reported yesterday. Not only did we exceed our benchmark, we continue to be ahead of schedule on achieving full funding and our promise to provide a secure retirement for our members. Now, a few words about our schedule. It's been a little bit crazy with the in and out of closed session, but today we still have a full agenda. Our Chief Executive Officer will share some of our current activities and achievements. We'll get an outline of the proposed budget for next fiscal year, and we'll also get a report on our pension solution, our technology project launching this month. A little bit of a note, we do need to recess at 12:05 to conduct public hearings on two sets of regulations on the topics of creditable compensation and the administrative remedy project. Those hearings will occur here in the boardroom, and we will break for lunch after that. There is also a third set of regulations to update our board election process, item 13. But because board election regulations are exempt from the Administrative Procedure Act, these do not have to go through the formal process. So today we'll have the first reading, and then we can vote on them in November. So hopefully that helps everybody understand what's going on today. And now we will move to the first agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 11. And we have Ms. Underwood and Ms. Baines.
Thank you, Chair Bradford, members of the Board. I'm Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here with Pritpal Baines. She is our Assistant Director over Financial Planning and Budgetary Reporting, and we are presenting the proposed 2627 operating budget. Now, we're doing something new this year that we plan to continue to do in future proposed budgets. In the past, we presented budget concepts to you in September as an information item only. We would take your feedback, and then we would come back to you in November with a budget for your approval. Now, budget concepts were your first look at the resources and funding that we needed to accomplish strategic priorities for that year as well as workload increase needs. But for this year, the proposed budget is being presented to you as a first reading, eligible to be potentially approved at today's meeting. And this change is primarily due to the fact that we made changes to our strategic planning cycle where we have already provided you with cost estimates of the resources and funding that we need to accomplish the goals and objectives in the strategic plan. However, those estimates did not include the Investments Branch. So in addition, many of the concepts, including the Investment Branch priorities, have also been discussed with you in multiple previous board meetings, and Pritpal will detail that with you in just a few minutes. And so since this won't be the first time that you're hearing most of these concepts, we do feel comfortable recommending approval of the budget today. However, if you don't feel comfortable approving the budget today, we'll take your feedback, and we will bring the budget back for a second reading at the November meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Pritpal, and she'll review with you the proposed budget.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Good morning, members of the Board. Pritpal Baines, Assistant Director of Financial Planning and Budgetary Reporting. Now, before we go over the proposed operating budget, just wanted to take a little bit of time to go over with you our review and assessment framework that we use as part of developing our annual budget. It's a rigorous process, and it commences more than a year in advance of final budget adoption. So the process itself, it is graded by six core foundational principles, and these are designed to ensure that all our financial resources are allocated responsibly, are in alignment with the organization's broader strategic priorities as well as state directives while maintaining our core business operations. It's a very collaborative effort with business area engagement throughout the process. Now, this requires thoughtful consideration because we want to make sure that we have the proper metrics and justification for each request while also ensuring that risks and impacts are fully considered. In addition, each proposal is discussed, reviewed, and approved by our senior leadership team. And on that sentiment, I wanted to extend my gratitude to the entire budget team for all their diligent work this cycle. Now, with that process in mind, we'll go ahead and take a look at the proposed budget. So the proposed operating budget is currently projected at $447.2 million. Now, that's an increase of $28.2 million, or about 6.7% over the prior year. Now, this is made up of two parts. The first is $21.7 million for new operating budget proposals that are tied to our strategic plan and business operations needs, and $6.5 million is for other budget adjustments, which are for routine annual operating costs. Now, on the staffing side, the budget includes 1,491 authorized positions. That's an increase of 60 positions, or about 4.2% compared to the prior year. So this increase is broken out between two new proposals for 2627. The first is for 33 positions related to enterprise strategic support and 27 positions for investment portfolio management. So our first proposal is for enterprise-wide strategic support with a funding request of $15.6 million. $5.6 million is for 33 positions, and $10 million is for service contracts. Now, many of the concepts we're discussing today have been previously reviewed by the Board, as Julie mentioned, including the Strategic Plan Costing Analysis presented to the Board in May, as well as prior discussions with the Board around AI, innovation, and technology. For instance, Accenture shared an update on innovation capabilities last November, and more recently, AI infrastructure needs were also presented at the July Board Offsite. Now, starting with the authorized positions. So six of the 33 positions requested as part of this proposal will directly support our core business operations, and the remaining 27 are tied to our new strategic plan. Now collectively, these positions focus on three key business objectives, starting with enhancing service delivery in areas of workforce training and development, data collection and reporting, providing various end-user technology support to all of our staff, and supporting our defined contribution plans. In addition, these resources will help strengthen our risk and compliance infrastructure as we continue to mature our enterprise compliance and cybersecurity programs, improve our overall financial accounting functions, and our data governance architecture. And lastly, resources will advance our business capabilities by expanding our internal expertise in the areas of innovation, data analytics, and standardizing technology solutions. Now, the second part of this proposal is for $10 million in service contracts. And as you know, our new strategic plan places a strong emphasis on technology, recognizing that modern, reliable, and innovative systems are not only essential to supporting our business, but also our members effectively. And this proposal reflects that shift and requests funding for innovation, data governance, cloud modernization, AI integration, as well as ongoing maintenance and support, including software licensing costs. Our second budget proposal is for $6.1 million for 27 positions for the continued growth and complexity of our investment portfolio. Now, as a reminder, these positions were not included as part of the Strategic Plan Costing Analysis that was presented to the Board in May. However, they have gone through the same review framework outlined earlier as part of the budget development process. Now, the Board has already reviewed these priorities through past Investment Committee discussions with both Scott and April as part of the broader long-term vision to grow, manage risks, modernize technology, and advance sustainability across the portfolio. Additionally, these priorities are also included in the Investments Branch Business Plan presented to the Board at the July Offsite. So these positions align with four key Investment Branch priorities as outlined here. Starting with One Fund, resources will help support board-approved strategies, ensuring compliance, using data to create stronger alignment across the portfolio. Next, positions for Shared Vision will help guide investments with a long-term perspective, reinforcing governance and positioning the portfolio thoughtfully as market conditions evolve. Resources for Technology Transformation. So here, positions will help modernize our internal systems and controls as well as improve analytics to drive efficiency and insight while keeping pace with market dynamics. And finally, positions for the Path to Net Zero Strategy will further embed sustainability directly into our investment decisions by continuing to integrate climate risk analysis, low-carbon investment opportunities, and active stewardship across the portfolio. And lastly, the budget includes $6.5 million for other budgetary changes related to routine annual operating costs. First, we have $4.5 million for employee compensation adjustments. So this is for merit salary increases for eligible employees based on their job performance within existing pay scales, and $2 million is for the prorata assessment issued annually by the Department of Finance for the shared cost of state administrative services. Now, as in prior years, we're also requesting additional budget authority if needed of up to 3% of the TRF Support Appropriation savings with board approval and authority to adjust the operating budget for any state revisions. Additional details regarding the budget and the requests we discussed today are also provided in Attachment 2 of item 11. And now I'll pass it back over to Julie to go over historical budget metrics. Thank you.
So to close this out, we just wanted to show you how this year's growth aligns with our three-year historical averages. And you'll see here on the slide, our requests are slightly higher in both dollar increases as well as our resource requests. But keep in mind that we are in the second phase of the Board's long-term 10-year strategic vision, and the second phase has its engage and act. And so with that, we expected an increase in resources because of that. So again, this is a first reading. We are asking for your approval today, and so with that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. The buttons are lighting up. But I don't see. There it is. Okay. Mr. Keely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Julie and Pritpal. Just want to, given the importance of this great report thorough, I did not have time to have a pre-call with the staff just because of commitments, and given the importance of adopting the budget and that this is a first reading, I would ask our colleagues to bring this back for approval in November.
I'm not sure what the list. Yeah, but why is it over there? Not over there. You go on? Okay, Ms. Pearl.
Okay.
I'm just looking for the green lights to go on. Oh, but we have two green lights on. How is that possible?
Well, I appreciate my fellow Board member indicating it is a first reading, which I agree it is. From finance's perspective, we would encourage you to submit the BCPs as soon as possible for review. Just so folks have an overall sense of the state process itself, we're already receiving BCP requests for budget change proposal requests from all of our state agencies, and they start submitting them as September 1st as sort of our date. So I would just encourage that the most amount of time you can give the team to be able to look at these is actually a lot more beneficial. It allows the team to interact with the staff and ask any other clarifying questions and such. So just not necessarily a question, but just an encouragement to send them along as soon as possible. Thank you.
I can't jump around. So let me see. Do you want me to skip?
I don't care.
Okay, go ahead, Karen. I'm sorry, this is.
I'm sorry. All right. Thanks. Thanks. And I do concur with the former members. But I have a question for you, Pritpal. You talked about how you had an extensive justification process for determining which was the things that were in the budget, and how many budget, how many positions were requested that weren't approved? So I guess everybody submitted their numbers to you, and then you decided whatever. So how many were not approved in that process?
So the total request for this 2627 cycle was for 116 positions across the organization. So of the 116, we are moving forward with 60, and again, that's based on our review and justification process. And I would reiterate that it's not only our team that does that evaluation process, but that discussion we also have with our senior leadership team where we review, discuss all the requests across the organization, and also seek guidance and approval from them as well. Now, the remaining requests will be reevaluated, and they'll go through that same process again in the next budget cycle. We'll revisit the requests that didn't make it to this cycle. We'll have lots of communication and dialogue with all the business areas regarding those needs to make sure that those needs are still needed. Is there something different? Do we have refined estimates? So they'll go through that same process, and will be considered in future budget cycles.
Okay, good. So about half. Okay, good. I do have another one, if that's okay. This is about the investment branch. So Scott, as you come up, think about what is your currency vacancy rate? Because I know that you need 27 more positions.
Thank you.
And then apparent, as we recall, there are five-year multi-plan that you had that had 100 positions for the investment branches, for the investment branch, and you still haven't finalized your shared vision. So why do you need the 27 more if you've already been approved for those previous amounts?
I want to understand the question. I think what you're asking is why are we requesting 27 positions?
And you haven't used up the other ones?
We haven't, we have some vacancies. Yeah. So let's start with the vacancies and then talk about the new positions. This year, by the way, is a bridge year for us, and we decided not to do a five-year BCP in light of going through the Shared Vision project where we hope to gain a lot more visibility over the next five years for those positions. So we view this more as a bridge year in terms of what we need to accomplish. The vacancies, as you know, we've been undergoing significant transformation in our leadership. That's not just myself as the CIO, but across the entire leadership up and down the chain. Fortunately, and I think this has been great for our culture and staff, is we knew this was going to happen generationally, so we paired, we partnered with our Human Resources Division and developed very detailed succession plans. And the good news about that is we implemented those succession plans. So a lot of the next generation was able to take on leadership positions. That naturally created vacancies for us to fill. And if I'm going into too much detail, let me know, but essentially what happens is every person in the investment team needs to compete for the position. They cannot be promoted into a position, and so there's a fair competition that goes on. You can imagine that running those competitions takes time, and it creates vacancies that take time for us to fill. So that's the bulk of what's going on with the vacancies. The other component that you're mentioning, while the shared vision is something that we're spending a lot of time with and making sure that we have the right strategy, we do know already with parts of the shared vision, areas that we need to continue to bolster. And we brought that in front of the Investment Committee. So we, as part of the shared vision, I wanted to level set and check where there might be areas where we need to bolster. And so April Wilcox came forward as one example, and we did a review of the operational divisions. And what we found is that we had grown in our complexity and strengthened the investment division, and we need to continue to bolster the operational divisions to match. So that's one category.
It's not just me.
We also, speaking about technology, we also recognize that we wanted to become in the forefront of technology eventually, and we've discussed this. Where we are at today was a positioning, again, where we thought we needed to strengthen even our current position. And so we're just building the foundation of that piece, which starts with the data warehouse that April has been talking about. So that's another area where we need positions. We've talked about the One Fund approach and how we want to create more and more value for the teachers around being able to take the insights in all of our divisions and combine it at the total fund level. We talked about examples of the year. So we're standing up a new division, the Total Fund Management Division, and that takes some resources to build that centralized division. You heard the consultants talk about that as well. So those were three areas, and I'm sure, I also want to just see, provide some opportunity for April to speak as well, but I think I covered the main components of your question, hopefully.
Yeah. So in progress, and that's why the 27 positions have been requested. It's been under extensive review and approval, and why it's in this budget.
What I mean, what we know today, even though we haven't completed the shared vision, what we know today and what resources do we need was included in that 27. I neglected to say that we also continue to grow in terms of the assets under management, and that alone would necessitate more portfolio managers and investment professionals to be able to manage the increasing scale of the portfolio.
Good. Anything else? No. All right. Thank you. Would you X yourself out?
I'm going to X.
Okay. Mr. Raffino.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And first of all, thank you, Ms. Underwood. Thank you, Ms. Baines. And thank you to the entire budget team for putting together this proposed 202627 operating budget. I know it's not a small task, and you said it was a very rigorous process anyway. And you said it was a very rigorous process anyway. I have two questions. The first one deals with growth and strategic alignment. And the second one, if we have time, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask about risk and resilience of this budget. So let's tackle the first one. And as you said very eloquently, the proposed budget reflects a 6.7% increase with 60 positions and significant resources tied to implementing the new strategic plan. As trustees, our role is to ensure that growth in staffing and expenditures translate into measurable value for our members. How will we track whether these new resources are delivering outcomes that align directly with strategic plan priorities rather than simply adding to our long-term baseline cost? And what metrics or accountability measures should the board look for over the next year to evaluate that alignment? Yep.
So a couple of things you'll want to look at. One is the accomplishments report for the strategic plan. The board has provided that once a year where management informs you of what we've accomplished based on the goals and objectives that you've set. The majority of this budget is associated with accomplishing those goals and objectives. So that is a key document you'll want to keep an eye on in terms of what we've accomplished and what we haven't accomplished. That's a big key. Management also uses some of those priorities in our KPI. You'll see those in our KPIs, our key performance indicators that we review on a regular basis quarterly with staff to see how they're progressing. A lot of those KPIs are associated with the things that we're accomplishing from a strategic plan perspective, as well as customer service metrics and other performance that we keep an eye on. So we're looking at that from a management perspective as well. If there's some issues that Cassandra sees, she would certainly bring that to your attention as well. So those are the two things I can think of that would help you.
Great. That's good. And it's good also for the benefit of our audience and our teachers that are listening to know, you know, how to, they can follow this process as well. With respect to risk and resilience, obviously, a substantial portion of the proposed budget invests in technology transformation and service contracts. I think it's about 10 million roughly, right?
Yes.
Which are clearly critical to the CalSTRS ability to remain competitive and resilient. And we heard all about it yesterday about that team. At the same time, though, outsourcing carries inherent risks of dependency, cost escalation, and potential knowledge gaps. So how is it staff balancing the near-term efficiency of external expertise with the long-term goal of building durable internal capacity? And how will the committee know that these technology and consulting investments are strengthening or weakening our independence and resiliency?
That's a really great question.
It's a long one, sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Ashish Jha Keet because this is such heavy technology in this strategic plan. I think we're gonna have to balance of internal expertise, but bringing in external expertise to probably train us so that we can do more of that work internally and save that money because external is very expensive. But Ashish.
Yeah, I think you cover it. But now moving forward with any technology projects or any projects when we are bringing any external party, we have a clause in there that how we can train, we can train our staff. And in the meantime, we are also providing training to our staff to keep up with this latest and greatest technology.
Yep. Just want to reflect on that, you know, because I think it's important that we don't become over-dependent on our outsourcing.
Yeah, Pratol has something.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to add to that. You know, going back to when we build the budget, we're also looking at those things, right? It's a balance between what we want to start doing in-house versus what we want to outsource. So a great example is our innovation, right? Where we're starting to develop our in-house sort of infrastructure and program and team with resources. But we're also reaching out to consultants because they've got that greater expertise. So again, it's that balance. What are the things that we can do to make sure that our goals are successful? As you know, our strategic plan is very innovation-driven. So that's one of the examples I wanted to share. Again, it's that balance, right? We want to build that in-house expertise while also bringing in external resources to help guide us through that process.
Okay. Thank you. And once again, thank you for, it's not a small task to put such a big budget. Probably Department of Finance will be the other ones that will beat you on this one. But my hat's off. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So seeing no further questions and hearing no motion, I believe we'll be bringing this back for a second read in November. Thank you. Oh. Sure.
Is there a statutory timeline for the budget to be adopted by this board?
Not that I'm aware of, other than the Department of Finance does like us to get our information to them.
It's tied to the overall general budget that the governor approves. So it needs to be done by November for sure, so it can go into the budgetary process of the state.
So we'll have, we're required to take action in November. So we should be prepared
Yes.
to take action in November. Okay.
Yeah, we've worked with the Department of Finance for leniency because of the timeline that we have with this board compared to what their timelines are. And they have worked with us to wait for November.
So if we have suggestions, questions, or amendments that might be needed, this document, as is written, could come back amended? Or this document's going to come back exactly how it is?
No, we can revise it for sure. That's, we'll take your feedback and we'll bring it back.
Terrific. Thank you.
Are there any public comments on item 11?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you, everyone. That brings us to item 12, our CEO report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's just a couple of things I wanted to highlight in my report. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge an award that is being awarded to our CIO, Scott Chan. And it's the Women Who Invest Award Gala that's going to be occurring in New York City. This event gathers industry leaders to advance the next generation of investors. We're proud that Scott will be honored at this year's event. The recognition reflects CalSTRS' longstanding support of girls who invest and Scott's leadership in cultivating diverse investment talent team and driving industry change. So I just wanted to recognize publicly his accomplishment with that. The next thing I wanted to highlight was the digital member outreach pilot that we conducted through our communications staff. The pilot used surveys to test the effectiveness of paid digital advertising and increasing awareness of CalSTRS among early career educators. It ran from February to April of 2025, and it targeted public school teachers under the age of 44 in the Los Angeles region, an area with high concentration of early career members and future retirement system contributors. Ads were strategically placed across digital platforms frequented by target audiences, social media, search engines, and streaming platforms. Messaging focused on key CalSTRS benefits, lifetime pension, survivor benefits, and how retirement benefits are calculated and accumulated. The results exceeded impression goals. The target audience saw CalSTRS messaging an average of 54.5 times over the five-week campaign. And survey data showed a statistically significant 13.1% increase in those who reported being very familiar with CalSTRS benefits. So that's very positive because what we're trying to make sure is that we're reaching out and connecting with our members. So the campaign successfully drove traffic to the early career page on calstrs.com with increased engagement and time spent on the site. So the next steps are going to be partnering with Public Affairs and Enterprise Strategy to analyze long-term effectiveness of this approach, determine ideal timing and frequency for future campaigns, and explore expanding the pilot to other regions or age segments. So we plan to execute a second digital campaign in the next two years incorporating learnings from this pilot. So it was exciting to see that. The next thing I wanted to highlight was the Ombuds Report that's within the, it's an attachment of the CEO report. The Ombuds Office provides confidential impartial assistance to members and stakeholders to resolve complex or unresolved issues. And it serves as an independent function by, our office is authorized by Education Code. It acts as a systemic feedback mechanism identifying trends and risk areas that may require execution and attention. Its staff buyer Ombuds, Mark Genie, and an associate Ombuds, Christina Nguyen. It operates under principles of independence, impartiality, confidentiality, and informality. So the key activities included in the report were an investigative and resolved a wide range of issues from members, employers, employer organizations, and the public. It provided insight to senior leadership on recurring themes and process pain points. And it contributed to risk mitigation by identifying and servicing emerging issues early. So looking ahead, as the office celebrates 42 years of service, it remains committed to upholding member trust, supporting CalSTRS values through fair and ethical practices and collaborating with leadership to continuously approve the service delivery and responsiveness of our interactions with our members. And finally, another final note of my CEO report was I want to just update you on the impact to the members during their Benefit Connect cutover. Some of you probably already are receiving information associated with this activity that we're coming up on in the next couple of weeks. So as we approach GO Live for Benefit Connect, we anticipate temporary impacts to the service delivery to our members. Member and employer access to online portals will be limited during the cutover. Contact center staff will be available, but with restricted access to account information. Post GO Live for a short duration, we expect longer benefit processing times, increased contact volume, and a potential dip in service levels during this transaction. So we really wanted to make sure that we're sending out communication as frequently to our membership and getting this information to them. So to minimize disruption, we've implemented daily leadership check-ins, escalation paths for urgent payment issues, co-located experts to support teams, interim procedures and training, and real-time messaging support via communications, and flexible resource deployment, including overtime where needed. So we do have staff on-site for duration of a period of time, 100% of the time, five days a week or four days a week, with the potential of five days a week to make sure that we can mitigate any of the transactional problems that may occur. And with that.
I know. I'm sorry to stop in the middle, but we need to call Ms. Martinez Wade up for our.
That's, I was finished. There's no questions. That was my last thing.
Thank you very much. I believe you have a statement to read for us?
Yes. So are you recessing the regular meeting to move into the here?
Is that what I'm doing? Okay. The regular meeting is in recess. Sorry, I was just giving it over to you.
No problem.
Here we go.
Good afternoon. I'm Joyce Lynn Martinez Wade, Director of Governmental Relations. It is 12:05 PM on September 4th, 2025, and we are in the boardroom at 100 Waterfront Place in West Sacramento to receive public comments on proposed regulations initiated by the Teachers Retirement Board. The board has proposed amendments to regulations that further interpret and make specific Education Code sections 22104.8, 22106.2, 22112.5, 22115, 22119.3, 22138.5, 22138.6, 22213, 22324.5, 22455, 22457, 22458, 22717, 22717.5, 22718, 23004, 23005, 23006, 23008, and 26301. Chapter 690, Statutes of 2024, AB 1997 McKinner, effective on July 1st, 2027, as adopted by the board on March 13th, 2025, simplifies requirements for credible compensation and credible service. The proposed amendments to regulations in this rulemaking action update the existing credible compensation regulations to implement the intended simplification associated with AB 1997, including the regulations defining credible compensation and class of employees. In addition, the proposed amendments to regulations in this rulemaking action update the regulations that specify the electronic file formats employers are required to use to report member data, like compensation and service information to CalSTRS. Within Division 3 of Title V of the California Code of Regulations, the proposed regulations amend sections 27201, 27300, 27301, 27400, 27401, 27600, 27601, and 27602 in Chapter 2, and sections 27800 and 27801 in Chapter 3. Add sections 27250 and 27251 in Chapter 2, and repeal section 27200 in Chapter 2. The regulations also amend the contribution file layout that is incorporated by reference in these regulations. Under the rulemaking provisions of the California Administrative Procedure Act, this is the time and place set forth for the presentation of statements, arguments, and contentions orally and in writing for or against the regulations, notice of which has previously been both published and sent to interested parties. Is there anyone present in the boardroom wishing to offer public comments? Is there anyone on the phone wishing to offer public comments?
There's nobody on the phone for this item.
We'll wait a short time for possible latecomers before moving on to the next hearing. Since there were no comments at today's hearing, and if we do not receive any written comments, we expect to make only a non-substantive change to the regulatory language and to the contribution file layout to specify the date of the contribution file layout. An additional 15-day written comment period will be noticed in the near future to provide the public time to review these changes. The notice stated the hearing start time was scheduled for 1:00 PM, and the notice included a request to arrive promptly for check-in before that time. The notice also stated that the hearing may be rescheduled for a different time as specified on the agenda for the Teachers Retirement Board meeting. The agenda published on August 22nd, 2025, specified 12:05 PM as the scheduled time of the hearing. For the record, the time is 12:14 PM, and nobody has arrived or dialed in to provide written or oral testimony. This hearing is therefore concluded with no public comments received.
Okay, so I'm calling our meeting back to order. No, not yet. What am I doing?
So for the second hearing, I'll start that now.
Oh, we're starting the second hearing. Forgot there was two. Okay, so take that back. We're still in recess.
Good afternoon. I am Joyce Lynn Martinez-Wade, Director of Governmental Relations. It is 12:15 PM on September 4th, 2025, and we are in the boardroom at 100 Waterfront Place in West Sacramento to receive public comments on proposed regulations initiated by the Teachers Retirement Board. The Board has proposed amendments to regulations that further interpret and make specific Education Code sections 22107, 22108, 22146, 22161.5, 22174, 22206, 22206.1, 22206.2, 22206.3, 22206.4, 22207, 22208, 22219, 22250, 22300, 22301, 22375, 22450, 22455, 24003, 24103, 26002, and 26132, and government code sections 11415.40 and 11505B. Existing regulations first codified in 2012 govern the administrative remedy process that occurs before a hearing is held by CalSTRS. The regulations reflect the structure that guides a member as their request or contention moves forward within CalSTRS. The administrative remedies under the regulations apply to situations in which a person requests review of either decisions or determinations made by CalSTRS staff or when a person or public agency disagrees with a final audit report. The proposed amendments to regulations make necessary updates to ensure the processes for disputing decisions or determinations by CalSTRS staff or findings in a final audit report are clearly laid out, including the actions to be taken by public agencies audited by CalSTRS and subsequent to that by CalSTRS and specified individuals affected by the findings in a final audit report. The proposed amendments align with Chapter 754, Statutes of 2022 AB 1667 Cooper, and ensure that a greater number of those affected by findings in a final audit report are notified of their administrative hearing rights. Within Division III of Title V of the California Code of Regulations, the proposed regulations amend sections 20520, 27100, 27101, 27102, and 27103, and also add section 27102.5 in Chapter I. Under the rulemaking provisions of the California Administrative Procedure Act, this is the time and place set for the presentation of statements, arguments, and contentions orally and in writing for or against the regulations, notice of which has previously been both published and sent to interested parties. Is there anyone present in the boardroom wishing to offer public comments? Is there anyone on the phone wishing to offer public comments?
There are no members of the public in the queue.
Thank you. We'll wait a short time for possible latecomers before reconvening the board meeting. The notice stated the hearing's start time was scheduled for 1:00 PM, and the notice included a request to arrive promptly for check-in before that time. The notice also stated that the hearing may be rescheduled for a different time as specified on the agenda for the Teachers Retirement Board meeting. The agenda published on August 22nd, 2025, specified 12:05 PM as the scheduled time of the hearing. For the record, the time is 12:23 PM, and nobody has arrived or dialed in to provide written or oral testimony. This hearing is therefore concluded with no public comments received.
Okay, let's call the meeting back to order. And we ended with our CEO report. Were there any questions from the board on that report? Are there any public comments on item 12?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay, that brings us to item 13, Updates to the Board Elections Regulations First Reading.
Good afternoon again. I'm Joyce Lynn Martinez-Wade, Director of Governmental Relations, here to present updates to the Board Election Regulations. During the last board election, there were several concerns brought up with the processes that was laid out in the regulations. And so today I bring you updated language, which is included in Attachment 1 of the board item with a detailed summary in Attachment 2. So these updates provide for electronic submission of election materials from the candidates. They allow for electronic signature. They remove the need to collect sensitive and personal information. They use gender-neutral terminology and correct grammar errors. They reorder the regulations for readability and to make sure like topics are grouped together so that the language flows for the process. These regulations are not subject to the Administrative Procedure Act as the other two sets are. So today I bring them to you for first reading, where we'll get feedback from the board and comments from the public, if any. We'll take those back. If we need to make changes, we'll bring back an amended version in November for approval. If there's any questions or comments.
Mr. Keely.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you, Joyce Lynn. Again, this is a first reading, and I'm going to ask that it be brought back. It's very detailed. There are probably some changes in it that I think are appropriate and others that I may want to follow up directly with you to make sure I fully understand the changes that are being asked. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will bring this back for a second read.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on item 13?
There are no members of the public in the queue for item 13.
Okay, item 14, the headliner, Pension Solution Update. Before Go Live. Hello, everyone. Welcome. Who's starting? Ashish, you're gonna go?
Good afternoon. I think this is a headliner, just like you mentioned. I will be providing, I think Anthony and Chris will provide the update where we are. But before we'll go there, this is the last meeting before we've flipped the switch. But I would like to recognize today, Sagittak Leadership Team, they all are here, the senior leadership, Piyush, Bala, Rahul, Kiran in the back. Can you stand up, please? We can't be here. Subodh is also here. We can't be, you know, talking about this project, where we are today, the collaboration and partnership with them. So I'm hoping that we will go in the same with the MNO phase. Anthony, we'll start with you.
All right. Thanks, Ashish. Good afternoon, Chair Bradford, members of the board. I'm Anthony Sweeney, Pension Solution Project Director. She said, come and do an end of this long journey for yourselves and many of our team members, and I'm happy to present this final update before our plan Go Live. And then I'll pass it over to Chris to provide his IPOC report and observations before we take questions. In my presentation, I'll have updates on the progress of our current project work streams, what we've been doing with member communications to prepare our stakeholders, our implementation in Go Live activities to prepare our team, and the latest on our project budget. This is the latest status of the six major work streams focused on Go Live. Everything's now in a green status, and the activities are mainly focused on what will be accomplished after Go Live. So that includes continuing to resolve data discrepancies, getting our employer files stabilized and preparing them for changes that they will begin testing in 2026. We'll test our future major release functionality, and then we will continue support efforts getting the team through cutover and Go Live and beyond, and ensure staff are adequately trained and assessing their future training needs. We've put a heavy emphasis on member communications and ensuring our members are aware of our downtime, what they could do to prepare for any upcoming life events, and when the system will be available again. We targeted messaging to various groups of our member community and use a variety of mediums to reach them. If they aren't active email or social media or online users, we mailed physical postcards to them to keep them updated. The latest went out last week. At the beginning of this week, some of our services went offline, so we're able to clear our inventory and minimize any in-flight work as we enter our cutover period. I checked with our contact center, and we have not seen any elevated concerns or significant increases in call volumes from our stakeholders as a result of our outreach. So I'm hoping our proactive approach is keeping them informed and prepared. So one of the benefits of us being able to stay on task and having a stabilized system during testing was allowing time in our project schedule for an eight-week soft launch period. This was a launch of our pseudo-production environment where we were able to simulate real-life activities, inputting transactions, running daily, weekly, and monthly batch jobs. As end-users completed training, they were given access to this soft-launch environment with their actual Go Live access roles and doing routine business processes as well as working through any of those access issues for the end-users. By the end of this soft-launch period, over 650 staff had accessed the system, updated from what you see when we prepared this slide. In addition to performing those daily business transactions, such as refunds, retirements, survivor benefits, we also processed actual employer contribution files from our largest reporting sources, and we ran our monthly role process that would have successfully generated all benefit payments, and we were able to produce over 24,000 correspondences, such as member letters. Issues were identified by the team during this soft-launch period, but it allowed us to proactively address those- to proactively address those issues rather than experiencing them at Go Live and potentially delaying processing times. This soft-launch period was an overall success, gave the team confidence in the system, and allowed the project team to test our support model as well as resolve those issues before Go Live. So as we prepare for Go Live and progress into these final few weeks, we're implementing different activities. One is a change support plan for our staff and leaders. This is the more personal side of dealing with change, really getting them ready for the experience and reducing stress, everything from virtual lunchtime support discussions to yoga classes to help them relax. And we also have our Benefit Connect sessions, Destination Benefit Connect sessions. These are the more technical side. They're tailored for each business area to help them set the expectations for what they need to do before we go into Cutover, during Cutover, and coming out of Cutover. And then lastly, we're preparing our support teams that will be able to handle issues that arise once we go live. Teams of subject matter experts, project team members, and our Sagit Tech team are positioned to help each business area navigate through the first few weeks of Go Live and beyond with on-the-ground support. These are the remaining key dates leading up to Go Live. Some functions and processes have already been halted, as we've mentioned, but next week our systems begin to go into inquiry mode. Then our data conversion will begin from Start, and we will bring up Benefit Connect on September 23rd. The following week after that, we will then integrate Benefit Connect with our Financial System Business Direct. This is our usual budget view and shows we're still on track with our budget spending planned through Go Live. The remaining dollars will take us through the end of September and will be finalized once all the expenditures are accounted for. Going forward, our budget will be allocated from our $104.7 million maintenance and operations budget that was previously authorized. We've had some estimated spend plans for the next 21 months, that maintenance and operations period, and our estimates are on target with what we've been allocated. We're also prepared to begin establishing our project-to-program team that will support the system for the long term, and that'll all come through our MNO funds. And we'll put forward a budget request next year for the permanent funding for that team beginning in '27, '28 fiscal year. At that time, we'll have a more precise budget number of what will be needed to support that team. So with that, this is quite a monumental occasion. I'm excited for these next few weeks. I'd like to thank the board and the executive team for all your support to get us to this point. Thank our Sagit Tech team and the leadership team from their group, and especially the business areas and the project team who have put in all the hard work to make this happen. So that concludes my presentation. I'll pass it over to Chris and take any questions.
Thanks, Anthony. Good afternoon, everyone. Chris Caboti with Guide House and our independent oversight update. As Anthony said, based on all the information that we have today, the project is on track to Go Live this month as planned. So the testing activities and the processes performed to date, they indicate that the primary functionality of the system is ready for production. There are still some defects that are known in the backlog that need to be resolved, and we also want to make the point that there will be defects that are found in production and other things that, like enhancements and things that want to be modified once you go into production. From our perspective, the key is for the knowns, that you have a process that was appropriate to handle those knowns, and then also that you have a key process to handle those unknowns once you get into production and things start to show up a little bit. For the knowns, we participated in the meetings that were set up as a triage process that the project team had in place to identify what the defects were that existed today that we knew about, and then how would we allocate those either for Go Live or post-Go Live? And so from our perspective, it was important that the right people were making those decisions, that the project didn't make the decisions for the business when it came to what would be in place before production and what would be thereafter. The business teams were heavily involved in that. Those defects were analyzed at a detailed level. They were discussed in detail as to whether they were required for Go Live or whether they could be deferred to post-production releases that were already planned out. And so the right people were involved from our perspective. The conversations were held in the right way. There was a lot of pushback as to whether it was absolutely necessary or not. So we do feel good about what was implemented prior to this production that's about to happen, and then what's going to get deferred till afterward. So again, from a risk perspective, we feel that that was handled as well as possible there, both by CalSTRS and Sagit Tech and everybody else involved. The planning and preparation for implementation have continued as planned as well. There's readiness checkpoints that they've performed to date. There've been a number of those where the project teams presented how each of the components that are required for Go Live are progressing, what's outstanding, and then the detail behind what's outstanding, so decision-makers could really understand what are the potential risks and impacts of actually making the decision to move on. And so tomorrow is a big decision point to move into Cutover that the Executive Steering Committee will make based on the team's recommendations there. So we're involved in those as well, and we're happy to see those moving forward. And then, again, the most important thing is, as Anthony mentioned, the post-Go Live processes that are there to support, once users are in place and members and beneficiaries are impacted, that the processes are there to handle things that do come up, and as they mentioned, there's a lot of preparation already there for that. So we're happy to see the planning and the execution of that while we're here, and we'll continue to monitor that as well. So we'll update the board and the leadership team as appropriate as those are ongoing. But as Anthony said, it's a big milestone. It's a big day for all of us to be presenting this to you. So with that, we'll have you take any questions you might have.
Thank you all. Questions? Okay, Ms. Peralt.
First of all, congratulations. I know this has been a very, very long journey, so glad to see we are nearing the end, and I know that there's probably excitement as well as a little bit of anxiety as that Cutover happens and we actually make that transition. So, but just a real quick question. I know, and I think you talked about this at the last meeting too, that we are, you know, we are going to defer some of the defects. Are any of those deferrals in the high or even medium-risk category? I think you had already said no last time, but I'm just double-checking that nothing moved into a space we don't love. And then I guess secondarily, I know we're creating workarounds, right? And we'll probably have to continue to do workarounds as maybe things come up as we cut over. Have we created, had to create any workarounds for anything that's a high risk at this point?
Yes, we've created several workarounds for items that were deferred, either during testing or even prior, that we agreed to push into post-implementation. Those were incorporated into our training materials and our procedures. Even ones we're finding now, we might have to defer, and we're documenting those workarounds to share with the team. So again, none are high-risk. They're bucketed for future releases, and then we'll reassess those as we get there to make sure they're still the highest priority.
Great. No, thank you. That was it, and I know we asked that question a lot, but it sounds like it's going as smoothly as it can go at the moment. And again, job well done for the team.
Thank you.
Mr. Oppenheimer.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. And also, congratulations to getting to this point. I've had the opportunity to be part of some rather large automation transition projects through the Child Support Project, and I know the hold-your-breath moment that you must all be experiencing right now, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate all the testing and the mitigation that you've done. The question I have is regarding the footnote on the budget doc for the additional $104.7 million for MNO. It also says unstabilization, which I understand for the first year will absolutely be necessary. But my question, and I apologize, this is my first board meeting, so I don't have the full background, but will the MNO reduce in future years because you're not looking at that stabilization cost, or is the MNO one point, the same for future years?
Yes, so that $104.7 million we requested two and a half years ago, estimating what we would need for this 21-months post-Go Live to take us through fiscal year '26, '27. We anticipate that would reduce. We're really building out this program team that will, it's a combination of a smaller footprint of Sagit Tech team, CalSTRS consultants, and then state staff that will support the project or the system ongoing from that point forward. So that's what we bring back next year, to say this is the ongoing amount to support the system.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Mr. Keely.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and my support to Michelle and Dave's comments as well. Not a question, but an observation and some praise. So having been part of this entire journey from this seat, I think there, from my perspective, there were three seminal moments in this journey. One was when Jennifer, at the time the Department of Finance, said we needed additional board oversight on the project, and there was a subcommittee that met, began to meet with the team. And from a governance perspective, that was a great lesson. It's a big project, we didn't have the expertise, and we began to have some additional oversight. I think that was terrific. Then there was two other events. One was the hiring of Anthony Sweeney, who took a very complex project, difficult to communicate, and communicated wonderfully to this board, timely, with a little bit of a sense of humor, but a determination with measurable goals that had to be achieved and accountability. And the third would be with Chris Caboti, when Chris took over as a consultant to this group as well. So people matter, leadership matters. You've helped us get us to this point, and obviously the outside consultants that have worked with you to date. So from my perspective, heartfelt gratitude, fingers crossed, and thank you so much.
Thank you. I just, you know, Ashish, since I've come back, I've always pressed you on all this, so I want to, first of all, express my support for the Go Live date. I'm very, very happy for you and your staff. I know it's been a lot of work, and having had some experience with other state projects that didn't go as well, the fact that we're on time and on target, I just think it's an amazing thing, and I just want to express my personal congratulations to you all, and hopefully when September 23rd comes around, we're all good. But again, congratulations.
Thank you, Steve. I think a lot of, you know, faces are now happy faces, but I'm the happiest, actually. You know, because this is a long journey, and I know we are coming here, providing, and you provide the support from Day One, and Cassandra and other executives, you know, they all are behind us, and we get there. So I know a lot of hard work in front of us, but we'll get there. So I'm very happy to report that we are doing great.
I just want to echo what my colleagues have said. Thank you all very much. I've appreciated our updates. Karen and I have been on the Pension Solution team, and we've gotten regular updates from the team, and they've been very honest and upfront the whole way, and I hope it continues to go well over the next month, so we can all have a sigh of relief.
We'll celebrate November meeting. So moving forward, I think Pension Solution will put on the shelf, and Benefit Connect is the name of the application. We'll use that.
Okay, we'll change the name. All right, I look forward to that. Any further questions? I think we're good. Any comments from the public?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item, information items 15. It's consent, so we're not, okay. Does anyone have questions on the information items? If not, we're going to continue on. Are there any public comments on item 15?
There are no public comments for item 15.
Okay, that brings us to item 16. This is an action item for 16A through D. Everyone has the paperwork up on the dais. I have a couple things to read into the record. The Audits and Risk Management Committee moves the adoption of revisions to the Board Governance Manual, Section 8, Audits and Risk Management Policies. The Board Governance Committee moves the adoption of a revision to the Board Governance Committee Charter. That was from May, so I believe we skipped it, or was after the board meeting. And the Board Governance Committee moves the adoption of revisions to the duties of the Board Chair/Advice Chair Policy, the Policy Review Policy, and Section 3, Charters of the Board Governance Manual. Okay, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Been moved, and... Thank you. Okay, Jenny, we need a roll-call vote. Stay with me, it's almost lunch, you guys.
Ms. Peralt.
Aye.
Mr. Oppenheimer.
Aye.
Mr. Keely.
Aye.
Mr. Tang.
Aye.
Mr. Gunning.
Aye.
Mr. Raffino.
Aye.
Mr. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Juarez.
Aye.
Denise, Mr. Tippersen-Bradford, would you care to vote?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, 17 items referred by committee. Didn't we just do that in consent? 18, information requests. I don't believe there were any. 19, draft agenda for next meeting. Madam CEO.
Yeah, I just, the only thing that I have, we have the budget coming back, so that's going to stay on. The only thing that I will probably add on here is the technology governance update from ongoing exploration in that area.
That's it. Okay, that brings us to item 20, opportunity for statements from the public.
We do have public comment for item 20. If we could get a three-minute timer, please? And first, in person, we will have Dana.
It's bad when the mic's taller than you are. So, good afternoon. I'm Dana Dillon, CTA NA Retired President. I know that the CalSTRS Board takes public comments seriously. As a former CalSTRS Board member, some of you actually, I know that many of you take that responsibility, you bear extremely seriously. It weighs on all the decisions that CalSTRS makes. To say that yesterday's speakers were passionate and committed advocates for their cause is an understatement. The Israeli-Hamas conflict is unbearably horrific and needs to be brought to a swift end. As President of CTA NA, retired and organization with over 21,000 members, I encourage you to follow your established process, to hear concerns, engage corporations, and assess the best options for moving forward. Activists within and outside of CalSTRS will always be passionate activists. Speakers, they will challenge the system to address external issues. I want you to know how appreciative retirees are that CalSTRS allows us to feel safe in our golden years precisely because CalSTRS is not reactionary, but instead is deliberate about securing the financial future of those who have dedicated their lives to public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We'll now move to phone comments. Our next speaker is Eva. Eva, go ahead.
Principal and proud member of CalSTRS. I'm here with you with humility and a humble heartfelt request that CalSTRS honor my father's clear wish and recognize me as his CalSTRS option beneficiary. My father made this designation well over six months before his passing. His intent was never in question. He told me, our family, his trust attorney, advisors, and others. He completed the paperwork required, but I unfortunately did not submit the paperwork in time. During those years, I was my father's full-time caregiver while also raising... while also raising six children, grieving the loss of my mother, and navigating a painful divorce. My father endured long hospital stays with me by his side, and when he was home, he needed constant care. I was quite honestly drowning under the weight of caregiving and survival, and I had to focus my attention on the continued care and support of him and my kids. I did finally submit the forms in December of 2024. I spoke with CalSTRS and was reassured with kindness that my father's wishes were clear and documented. Sadly, my father passed just weeks later, on January 1st of 2025. Because his death came within six months of my submission, under your rules, no one now receives his benefits. A supervisor from the Survivor's Benefits Department suggested I ask for a chance to speak with you, share my story, and ask for grace and understanding. My father's wishes could not have been clearer. After my mother's death in 2021, he wanted me to be his beneficiary, not for myself alone, but so I could provide stability for his six grandchildren and preserve our home. That was his heart's intent. My father gave more than 30 years to education. In fact, our entire family consists of teachers. We are a multi-generational CalSTRS family. Even when my father moved us to Ojai, he drove over an hour each way to continue serving the LAUSD. His devotion to teaching and his family defined his life. Today, I'm asking for compassion and grace. I ask you to see not just the rulebook, but the human story, a single mom of six who spent a lifetime caring for her father and family. His years of service and desire to provide for his family and grandchildren after his passing should not be negated due to the extreme circumstances that caused me to be late in submitting the paperwork. If I could go back in time, I would. I appeal to you as parents, grandparents, and family members. You know what it means to want your life's work to continue protecting those you love. I ask you to see the humanity of the situation and find empathy and compassion in your hearts. Please honor my father's wish. Please recognize me as beneficiary so that his legacy of care can live on through his grandchildren. Thank you.